Thank you very much. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
I'm here. If we've all had a chance to take a look at the minutes for the June 7 meeting, we are going to need a motion for approval on those.
I move that we approve the minutes for the June 7, 2017, meeting.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. This is for items that are not already on the agenda. Does anybody wish to discuss things about the universe, anything whatsoever? No? Okay. Then we move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commissioner members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove of any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. I do understand that we will be dropping item number three, and that will be taken up at a meeting down the road. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Seaver.
Chair Dickerson, we're not kicking it down the road. We're going to handle it after the consent.
Oh, I see.
After the rest of the consent agenda. There's just one little thing that changed, and we can't adopt it as is.
Okay.
Or you can't adopt it as is.
Okay. Then we will pick it up after the consent. So we have items number one, two, and four. Does anyone else need to recuse themselves or discuss or pull anything?
No.
All right. We will need a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Items one, two, and four.
Items one, two, and four.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on into the public hearing, we will start off with item number three, the annual technical amendments to zoning ordinance. Can we hear from staff and/or Philip?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson, members of the planning commission. The only change that we're requesting is for the amendments to section 12-6.03 and 12-6A.03, the deletion of crop and tree farming from the R1 and RSL1 districts respectively. We're dropping that as a technical amendment because we have learned that there are some parcels that are active agricultural operations in specific plan areas. For example, the Blosser-Stoll specific plan area, even though there's a lot of the zoning is R1, there might be a financial impact by removing that as a matter of right, and therefore, it's not appropriate for a technical amendment. Staff will deal with that at a separate time in a future item. But the other items, the other requested, excuse me, other amendments that we're proposing, section 12-1.04A, I think we have a problem there. There's, I think, I don't, I think the A is not supposed to be there. Is there a way to double-check that, Sean? The definition of agricultural use, and then section 12-28.03, and the others, 12-35.201D, 12-35.302A10, 12-41.05B, and 12-41.06D. Those are all technical amendments that we're recommending that the planning commission consider and make a recommendation to the city council.
So if a motion is made for the resolution, we would basically ask that section 12-point, or 12-6.03 be removed from it, 12-6A.03 be removed, and the modification of 12-1.04, the A in the description, that that be dropped as well?
I think the A is, does want there.
Okay. Well, then we need to add the A to the amendment.
That's, we don't need to worry about that because that's just a clerical issue.
All right. Any other staff comments? Questions from the commission? No? Okay. We'll need a motion for resolution number 2732.
Okay. I move that the planning commission, by resolution number 2732, recommend that the city council approve zoning text amendment Z2017-0002 with the proposed amendments.
I second that.
Okay. And the two amendments being dropped?
Yeah, 12-6.03 and 12-6A.03.
Okay. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Resolution carries, and we move to item number five. Furukawa Warehouse Expansion Project located at 1259 Furukawa Way. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, the project before you is a plan development permit to allow a 30,000-square-foot warehouse addition to a 4.6-acre site in the PDM2 Plan Development General Manufacturing Zoning District. The project site is located at 1259 Furukawa Way. As you can see, the project vicinity, first Furukawa Way is a pretty short industrial street. The street, the vicinity is, the M2 General Manufacturing Zoning District is applied throughout that entire project vicinity, extending it from Stoll on up north beyond the project site and on this westerly side of Blosser Road. So that same general manufacturing zoning district is prevalent throughout that entire area. The M2 district is our heaviest manufacturing zoning district that allows a variety of industrial manufacturing-type uses. Again, as you can see, the project site bounded generally, there's a couple mini storage facilities and other various industrial uses in the project area typified of that zoning. That's the neighboring property just to the east. B&amp;B Steel is a steel fabrication facility. The project site again itself, again, the project would add a second warehouse. The second warehouse would be roughly 30,000 square feet in size with about a 2,200-square-foot office of office space and a mezzanine, about a 2,000-square-foot mezzanine. So again, the existing site to the bottom of the screen, the unshaded, which would be on the east side of the property, and again, the new project, the current project, the shaded area, just to make it pop on about two acres of that 4.6-acre site. As you can see, kind of to the left there, as a part of the original project, the parking lot along Furukawa Way was constructed and is existing. That's also kind of exemplified in the slide right there. As you can see, the parking lot's already there. Also, a portion of the landscape strip, the landscape strip was already constructed as a part of the Phase 1 project. So again, the warehouse adjoining the existing building, that's the project site itself. Again, you can see the existing warehouse, and that fenced area is the vacant portion of the property where the new warehouse would go. That's a picture of the existing warehouse and office facility next door. And again, an architectural elevation of the building, the new building would be a continuation of the existing building, so to speak, and that, as you can see, would kind of carry over the same general, oops, style. Get back to that slide if I can. So it would carry over in that same kind of style and color scheme as the existing building. So again, it's a pretty simple building typified of what happens there, a warehouse facility in the industrial zone. And so again, simple metal building that again would continue the style and theme of the existing building. Again, the existing landscape strip, we've talked and worked with the project's landscape architect. We've discussed the existing trees. There's several existing trees in the landscape strip. We'll replace the ground cover shrubs with new ground cover and shrubs. The trees have been shocked a little bit by the drought. We decided it's better to try to keep and preserve and nurse back to health the existing trees as opposed to start over with new trees. Reflected in the conditions of approval, again, we'll work with the project landscape architect to try to save and maintain those trees. There are a few that have been, we've had these discussions, butchered, to use a kind of a loose term, overpruned. Those will be removed. So any trees that have been determined by staff, the zoning administrator, meaning staff and the landscape architect that are too far gone, will be removed and replaced. And, I get my direction straight. That's the existing landscape strip on the easterly side. As you can see where the existing building is, landscaping has been properly maintained and looks pretty good. So the ultimate objective would be to have the westerly side that's been unoccupied to be equal to or better than the easterly side. So with that, again, the project is pretty straightforward, pretty simple. It's a natural addition, taking the vacant portion of the property in the M2 zone, adding a second warehouse to kind of match the existing warehouse. The project meets all parking, landscape coverage, and setback standards of the M2 zoning district. So again, staff recommends approval of the plan development permit as conditioned in the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of Mr. Scott?
No. You said the trees, you're going to leave them there. Who's going to make the decision? What department? Who's going to go verify that?
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. The staff member in conjunction with the landscape architect. We've structured the condition in such a way, it will take some time, and the property owner and the project architect. But we've structured it, the condition states it's subject to the review and consideration of the zoning administrator. And so staff is designated by the zoning administrator to make that determination. But again, that's with careful review in conjunction with the property owner and the landscape architect. We'll give it a little bit of time and see, if possible, if we can save those existing trees. But if not, I think the property owner is agreeable to remove and replace. I was trying to, sorry for my, oops. That's just something that came to mind, that tree shown there. About, what was it, 2014, we worked on the car wash project. It was called Jordan's Car Wash or the downtown permit for that car wash. As part of that review, when we reviewed that car wash, the tree on the right-hand side that we thought was dead, we were going to remove it. After a lot of discussion and discussion with the landscape experts, they said with water and care, it could survive. And that just came to mind when we looked at this particular project. That's an example of a tree we thought was lost that was saved. So we believe in the same kind of manner, with a little bit of just further examination, it could be possible to save those trees. So again, staff in conjunction with the landscape architect would make that decision prior to occupancy of the building.
And if you do determine that a tree is not going to be saved, the applicant is willing to replant the tree or a different tree?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez, that was the agreement discussions with the project architect very recently. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Scott, the trees that are going to be, the new trees are going to be put in, and any replacement trees are going to take place, are they the 24-inch box or what are we, what are we looking at, size-wise?
That's a good question. Thank you for asking. We didn't make that determination, and maybe that's something that the planning commission wants to give direction. As a rule, we typically do, the general rule is, we haven't locked in that final determination of where we apply 24-inch, well, there's some discussion about 24-inch box trees, but as a rule, whenever it's a front setback or along the street, they're typically 24-inch box. So that would probably be our recommendation, absolutely along a street frontage.
I think that's.
But we didn't conclude that.
Right. I think that's, I think that might also be important from the staff, that you're, it's a continuation of trees that are already maturing, and so, you know, you don't want to be too far behind all with the new ones that you put in, so. Okay. Can we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant here? Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, and any comments you'd like to make?
Steven Reese, architect. My office is in Lampoke at 1225 Wimmer Drive. I'm here representing the project and Mr. Ron Ziegler. We reviewed these conditions of approval. We've worked very closely with Mr. Scott and also with Mr. David Bayes. I'd like to thank them both for their help here. It's been instrumental in pushing it through some of the other departments, which are a little less cooperative. In any event, we understand the issues with the trees, and we have no problem with that. I think that reality was that the water was, you know, everybody cut their water use, and with just the minimum amount of water to maintain the trees alive was basically what was applied. I think that when more water is applied to these trees, they'll, they'll basically come back. And if they don't, and there may be one or two that don't, we'll replace them. We don't have any problem with that. We want it to look good, too, so.
Thank you very much.
If you staff has any questions, or if the commissioners have any questions, I'll be glad to try to address them. As I said, Mr. Ziegler's here in the audience. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you for your, your time.
We have questions from Mr. Reese?
So it's a warehouse, 30,000 square foot, five truck docks, and what's your, what's your traffic? I mean, we're going to be going up Main Street, Stoll. How do these trucks get to the freeway?
I'm not really quite sure how they would go. I would assume that they would go the most direct route, probably down to Betaravia and over to the freeway that way. But it's just a guess on my part. I don't, I don't honestly know how they.
So you guys don't run a, some kind of, you don't tell your truckers where to go or how to get on the freeway, or which streets to use or anything?
Unfortunately, they don't really listen to me. I'd like to tell them where to go.
There's no traffic plan in place?
No, sir.
Thank you.
The traffic, the truck traffic is pretty low, though. We reviewed that with Mr. Bayes and the city traffic people there, and we don't foresee a huge increase in traffic.
Thank you.
So thank you for the question.
Further questions? Hallie, do you have any comments about the traffic, or is staff mum on it?
Staff is fine with the findings.
Very political of you. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. If there are, are there any further questions of staff? No? Then I will close the public session, bring it up to us, and we are going to need a motion or any comments from commission members.
Do you have comments?
I do not.
Okay. I move that the planning commission, by motion, approve plan development permit PD 2017-0001, which is a Furukawa Warehouse Expansion Project located at 1259 Furukawa Way.
Second. I motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Moving on to number six, skilled nursing facility, plan development permit at 526 Plaza Drive.
Chair, I'd like to make a statement. I found out this morning that my business partner was the realtor on this project. I have no business dealings with him in the realty part of the business. I won't have any gain financially or loss financially from this decision, and I do feel I can be impartial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, the project before you is a plan development permit for the 99-bed skilled nursing facility. The project is located in the CPO Plan Development, PD CPO Plan Development Commercial Professional Office Zoning District at 526 Plaza Drive. Again, the vicinity map shows the project vicinity, the project site there on the right-hand side or the easterly side of that vicinity map. The project is surrounded by a variety of zoning and a variety of uses. Various office uses are generally to the north and to the east. City of Santa Maria Cemetery is to the east, and our residential neighborhoods to the south, and a vacant lot zoned, PDR3 Plan Development High Density Residential is there to the west of the project site. Again, just a picture of one of the offices, that's one of the FBI, Federal Bureau of Investigation Field Office, that abuts the site directly to the, to the north there. Again, to the south of the project site, our residential neighborhoods in the Driftwood Wood Gardens subdivision. Project site itself, that's looking east from Barcellus Street, which kind of bends there at Bluebird Street. Another view of the project site, obviously, the project frontage along Bluebird Street. Obviously, the project will install public improvements in segments of Bluebird Street, including curb gutter, sidewalk, and street, street trees. That's the project site itself. Again, the project consists of three buildings. Again, it's a 99-bed skilled nursing facility. The facility totals 58,000 square feet. The three buildings, central building there, connected by the two perimeter buildings, connected by breezeways. Just a quick view of the floor plans, a little bit too busy to read, but the lobby, administrations, admissions offices there in the center. On the right or north side, a 50-bed wing, and on the left or south side, a 49-bed wing. Parking, driveways and parking around the project perimeter. A total of 83 parking, oh, 83 parking spaces are required, 120 are provided, and as you can see, a covered entry to serve the needs of the patients there. Project architecture, the architecture is considered or called by the project architect contemporary craftsman. It includes hardy board siding with stucco. You can see the port de courcher there at the prime, the main entry. So the top or the, the top are the front elevations, the front elevations that face Bluebird Street. It also, as you can see, also hip roofs with gable features are provided. As a, as an observation, the building architecture is stylistically consistent. That's the neighboring house to the south, one of the residences to the south. The building architecture, we believe, is stylistically consistent with the residences to the south. Same type roof material, or same type roof structure, same general design. Also, just a closer-up view of the, again, the west-facing elevations, those elevations that face Bluebird Street. Again, the site plan, so again, that westerly elevation would be this elevation is shown here. As a general rule, the site plan, we believe, is good and appropriate for this particular project. In general, staff tries to encourage new buildings to be close to the street as a rule. Generally, we like to see the well-articulated, attractive buildings by the street. But again, just by definition, given this type of use, a project that serves the needs of patients who may be infirmed elderly or have special mobility needs, obviously, you do need to have this kind of a drop-off, which is common for medical facilities. So the drop-off is appropriate here at the front, again, with the port de courcher and the parking in front, again, that would serve the needs of the patients. So we believe this is the appropriate site layout for this particular project. Again, access off of Plaza Drive, the primary access, and access off of Bluebird Street to secondary access. And again, as an alternative to buildings up front, substantial landscape strip provided along the Bluebird Street frontage, that's roughly 30 to 40 feet wide with a lot of tree plantings in it. So we believe that's a good alternative, and it should establish and set up a nice pedestrian-oriented walk along Bluebird Street once the project's completed. Again, in this particular case, the project architect provided a pretty good variety of plant materials. Usually, we get one of these kinds of sheets. In this particular case, they provided two of those kinds of sheets. And again, you can see a variety of color and shapes in terms of shrubs and plant materials. Also, there are 11 different kinds of trees shown there in the plant material scheme. So again, we think it's a pretty good planting plan that really should enhance and do a lot for this particular spot. Also, I didn't point out, there's 11 little private courtyards to serve the needs to give a little tranquil retreat for residents of the facility. So again, those are part of that extensive landscape scheme as well. So again, and just one other thing, we did look at, the CPO zone does have specifications that is, whenever you do a new project or provide a new project in proximity to a residential zoning district, which this project does in this particular case, adjacent to a residential zoning district, the CPO zone establishes certain criteria. Staff reviewed those criteria, and the project meets all of those criteria. One is setback, whenever a commercial project in the CPO zone abuts a residential, residentially-zoned property, a minimum 10-foot setback is required. The project provides a 45-foot setback on that southerly side, so the setback instead of 10 is 45. The CPO zone says whenever a project, abuts a residentially-zoned project in the CPO zone, that the height consideration, the height of the new building should be considered. In this, in this particular case, as we discussed, the buildings are, I keep going the wrong way, get my directions. The buildings are single-story. So the intent of that, that height consideration, obviously, is to ensure that when you do have commercial buildings next to residentially-zoned properties, there's no second stories or additional height that overwhelms or overlooks the nearby residential property. Again, in this particular case, the building architecture is one, single-story, and two, sympathetic or kind of matches the residential properties to the south, so we couldn't think of a better or more compatible fit in this particular case. Three, the CPO zone requires a wall whenever a property in the CPO zone abuts a residential property, and the wall, as we saw in that earlier picture, is provided in this case. So the point is, the project does meet all of those criteria as specified by the CPO zone. And as well, we believe the use is kind of a low-intensive, low-key kind of use that not only fits the CPO Commercial Professional Office Zoning District, but it's a good use as far as the transition between the office uses and the office facilities to the north and the residential properties to the south. So we believe, one, the project is a very good fit for this particular site, and two, it meets all the criteria of the CPO zoning district. So I think with that, staff will conclude, and staff will recommend approval of the plan development permit as specified in condition, in the conditions of approval for the project. So I'll conclude unless you have questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Questions for staff?
I do. Hallie, I've been to that site, and I've actually utilized those facilities at Plaza. And when you try to get out of Bluebird onto Stoll, it's almost impossible. So are we doing anything, we have anything planned for the traffic that this is going to create?
Chair and Commissioners, we do not. We're going to have to see what the impacts are and work from there. But most of the shift changes that go on are off-peak hour, which is what we explore, the AM, PM, peak hours. So in truth, it's not anticipated to add a whole lot of load to that, those two hours that we study. So the regular visitors who come, doctors that come in and out of the skilled nursing center to do special care, are going to be working in the same traffic patterns that have been historical.
So we've created a situation where we have absolutely no way to turn left on any way to get out of that neighborhood, without, there's no control on Barcellus or on Stoll?
Not to stop the major roads. You're correct. I don't anticipate, given the traffic demands, that, just double-check, that Barcellus, Win Centennial, what was the, the project across from it? Well, he's talking about coming up Barcellus onto Miller, and then coming up Celia onto Stoll. I know that there were planned improvements along Miller Street when the apartment complex that is on Park and Miller were going to come in, and that is anticipated to help direct traffic when that comes in, and hopefully, that will help clarify and make it a little easier to make the turning movements into and out of Barcellus, because it'll be a little bit more directed, as opposed to the, all the lefts and rights that go on in and out of the other medical offices.
Are you saying there'll be a light there?
There's, we're not anticipated to stop Miller or Stoll with any sort of signal or stop sign, given the volumes of traffic on Stoll and Miller versus on Barcellus and Celia. If it does come to a point where we're experiencing significant delay, we'll have to do a warrant analysis when that time comes. But it was not anticipated, given the peak hour studies that we typically do, that it would be necessary. Now, that's not to say that we may need to do a four-hour warrant analysis at some different point of the day if we're experiencing significant delays, because we only study those two peak hours with our traffic impacts.
Okay. I'm glad you're aware of it. Thank you.
Hallie, I do have a follow-up to that, is I walked the area, actually, because I know that this is a nursing home, so a lot of the people won't be able to drive that are going to live there. And there is no sidewalk on Stoll when you walk by the cemetery, and it's pretty dangerous. So I think it is something that we need to look at because...
We have been looking at a project to be able to put sidewalk in as a capital improvement project along that area of Stoll, because we know we have issues with the turnpocket going northbound onto College from Stoll and the lack of sidewalk that we have around those portions of the cemetery district.
And there is no pedestrian-friendly crosswalk either. When I crossed the street, it was pretty dangerous to walk, to cross Stoll, because it is pretty busy. And the way it's built, the stoplights really don't help you cross right there.
They don't help you cross?
They don't help you, there's no really, like I said, a crosswalk or anything. It's pretty dangerous when I walked it.
But the signal has a pedestrian push button?
No, I'm talking about in between the lights.
Okay.
By the cemetery. Because there was no sidewalk, there was no sidewalk, and you are able to cross, but the traffic is pretty heavy on Stoll.
Well, once again, it's that balance between pedestrians and vehicles that we always work to achieve, that sense of needing to really keep ahead, you know, your head on a swivel when you're crossing those major intersections as a pedestrian, that prevents you from having a false sense of security. Like you said, I'm aware that this is a concern, and I'm aware that I need to make sure that I have plenty of distance in between cars, whether that pedestrian needs to wait for maybe a minute until they can find that clearance zone. That is one of the things that we are aware of and encourage pedestrians to have that sense. I mean, we don't want people just thinking that they can walk out into the middle of a four-lane road that handles 45 mile-an-hour traffic and think that two stripes are necessarily going to prevent anything bad from happening to them. So that's why we go through and we do do the warrant analysis and we do do the pedestrian counts, and we do determine if there's enough pedestrians using it regularly enough that we need to put in a facility. And at that Stoll Road, I mean, it would be a full pedestrian signal. It would be push buttons, it'd be overhead, you know, lights, it would basically become like a traffic signal. So it's one of those items where we do like to have pedestrians realize the type of road that they're crossing and take their time and really consider, is this the best time for me to walk, or do I need to wait another few seconds and make sure that it's clear? There are legal crosswalks, whether they're striped or not, at the extension of any roadway.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it is, there is legal crosswalks per the vehicle code. However, we need to balance out that concept of false security by just putting, you know, stripes on the road, or do we want the pedestrians to have the heads-up safety awareness? Because it's not like stripes in the middle of the road make everything safe all of a sudden. So if it's not a consistent pedestrian path of travel, or is it something that has the facilities, like you say, to take them to a sidewalk, we don't necessarily want to guide pedestrians to that location to cross.
Well, I think it's something we need to start thinking about, because we are, the other project also is going to have elderly people, and now you have more people, and we already have another place that's already there. And so you will have more pedestrians in that area where they don't necess, they can't drive anymore, they don't have licenses and so forth.
We are trying to do like the frontage improvements along Stoll Road to be able to at least bring sidewalk and ADA ramps into that area to connect them further down to the Stoll, to the shopping center at Trader Joe's and what will not be Costco very soon. So we are trying and do realize that that needs to have that pedestrian connectivity. We're working on design and funding for that.
Okay.
And we don't, we obviously don't want to burden this type of project with such a major infrastructure that's a regional improvement, so we, as a city, are working on that.
Okay. Great.
Further questions? Bill, I have a quick question for you. This project borders along the cemetery to the east. What is being put there? Is it a chain link fence? Is it a wall? I mean, are we doing anything as far as, as that sort of thing goes, what's happening?
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Nothing was planned or proposed, as I recall. There's an existing low wall there, and just given the interface, I think that's all that's proposed. The low wall, I can't recall. Having walked the site, it was probably only about three or four feet in height, as I recall, a stone wall along that easterly perimeter. I think that's the extent of it.
Okay. And that's probably cemetery, the cemetery wall itself?
That's correct. That's my belief. Again, just based on site visits, yeah.
Because I kind of recall, if you move down further south along that property line, don't we start getting into taller cinder block walls, I think? Or am I mistaken? I'm just thinking about the small, small wall.
All I recall, based on my walk, I walked along that southerly boundary against the existing block wall along the southerly property line. And as I recall, on that southerly, southwestern side, there was only the low stone wall, as I remember it, as I recall.
I'm thinking about the second, the second half, maybe I'm thinking.
Something we could always confirm, but that's the way I remember it, anyway.
Okay.
And the wall, staff felt that four and a half feet was not significant above the, what is it, 20? It's going to be 22, correct, the wall?
The height of the buildings themselves are 22 feet six inches. So at the peak of the roof...
The roof, okay.
Sorry if we weren't clear, but yes. At the peak of the roof, the single-story structures are only 22 feet six inches tall, which in our minds is not tall at all. The zoning, the CPO zone says, anything over 18 feet in height, you need to look at and think about a little bit. And so we're just pointing out, the height is negligible, it's just slightly over the 18 feet. So we did look at it and we just found there was no impact.
Okay.
So it's at the top of the roof.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? No? Can we hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative? Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jason Cook. I'm a principal with Strategic Medical Properties. We're a partner with the applicant on this project in here, representing them today. Our address is 1447 North El Camino Real in San Clemente, down in Orange County. First off, I'd like to thank Bill, as that last applicant said, is tremendously helpful in helping move this project forward to this point. We're very excited to have this project in front of you. By way back on a little bit, in terms of this particular use, a couple of the things that we see it doing in this community, one, meeting just a sheer shortage of skilled nursing beds, and two, bringing modern skilled nursing beds to this community. Santa Maria is not unique in the state. In fact, there are a lot of communities like this where there are both a lack of beds and a lack of modern beds. So we're very excited about bringing this project to town. Here to answer any questions that you have, I guess, before I open it up, again, one point of clarification, the discussion about the pedestrian activity coming from this facility. The patient type for this skilled nursing facility is quite different than the senior housing project across the street from us. The senior housing oftentimes will have very ambulatory, active population. The patients in our facility are there really rehabilitating, not active outside of the facility. The rehabilitation tends to occur within the facility under the observation of medical staff. So it really wouldn't, in terms of contributing to that pedestrian activity, this wouldn't be a big contributor, like some of the surrounding uses. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have members from our team here as well. Megan Snyder with Greg Maeda and Associates is our architect. They specialize in designing skilled nurse facilities. Russ Garrison with Bethel Engineering, who I'm sure is no stranger to those on the commission, and my business partner, Bryce Stafford, who's also at Strategic Medical Properties.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Chair. So skilled nursing facility and the long-term care, is this different or is there... We have the Marion Dignity Health Long-Term Care. Is that what a skilled nursing facility is?
So a skilled nursing facility can see a variety of different types of patients. Our facility would be set up really to see what's typically referred to as short-term or short-stay, which is maybe average stay of about 30 days. Common patient might be someone who had hip surgery, an elderly person who maybe has other health issues, so they're not well enough to go home and rehabilitate at home. They're much better to be under 24-hour care as they rehabilitate. So it ranges from that type of patient, which would be referred to as a short-term. The longer-term patients can, you know, whether it be stroke or cardiac, they're patients that are there for more extended stays, under higher acuity type of patients. And some of those may be similar to the type of patients that are seen at the hospital, albeit this would be in a much, I guess, more modern or current facility with a different delivery care model. Our facility is also designed to handle subacute patients, which there's very much a shortage of those type of beds in this community. Subacute type of patients are much longer-term stay, perhaps patients that are on ventilators or tracheotomies, things of that nature, that much, much higher acuity. So that's really the range, and there are certainly other patients that fall within, you know, that continuum.
So that would be your reason, these patients, they're not leaving the facility?
No. I mean, they're leaving eventually, but they're not on a daily basis.
I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nice, Tim, nice.
They're not walking out of the facility every day and going on a walk.
They're not, no, no. They're very much, Megan, I don't know if you want to add anything, but yeah, they're receiving care within the facility. That's the purpose.
So it'll be the people that want to visit them, the family, friends, and the staff that are going to be using the streets and the parking and that type of thing?
Yes, yes, exactly. And the patients, there's a real close collaboration between the hospital and our skilled nursing facility, because it's really those patients that are discharged from the hospital, not well enough to go home, who would come to this facility as an interim stay.
Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez? No? Just a quick question, and not to sound too snotty about it, but what is the difference between the modern care that you're going to bring to our community versus the evidently antiquated care that we have throughout?
So I didn't mean to come off that way, but there, I guess there would be two components to this. One of the, an interesting fact about skilled nursing facilities in our state is that over 80% of the facilities themselves are 45 years or older. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, except for a lot of times, what you find in those older facilities are smaller rooms, smaller facilities, multi-bed, you know, patient rooms with two, we have, we have a couple, we have some with two as well, but with three-plus beds per room. And the care model has just really changed. So part of it is driven by the facility and part of it is also a staffing thing, which is separate and apart, so I can't comment on how the skilled nursing facilities are run or operated here. But just from a pure real estate standpoint, the environment that we can provide in a new facility, the therapy rooms, and actually, I should let Megan, perhaps, you want to come up and add to that?
Oh, no, don't palm that off on her. Oh, no, no.
If that's sufficient, the facility is a big part of the, is a big part of the care that can be provided, probably like you saw at Marion Medical Center. I believe they've gone through recent renovations, no matter how great a job the staff does when you don't have the proper environment for the care to be delivered. It does matter, so that's really what I was, that's what I was getting at.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? Any further questions for staff?
No.
No? All right, then I will bring it back to us, and if there's any comments, then certainly we can make them, otherwise, we're going to need a motion.
I would make a comment on your wall comment. I've done a lot of work out at the cemetery, and although it's a cemetery, it is a nice place, if that makes sense. So if they, to be sitting out in the back on the patio, although it is a cemetery, it is pleasant out there. I mean, I've actually, I've worked on that wall you're talking about, we did the mausoleum out there, so I don't know, I don't think a tall wall back there would necessarily be adding to the project.
Yeah, no, and I get what you're saying, and I agree. You know, I was thinking about it in the inverse, I was wondering about the privacy of the people who are there for their funerals, but you're right, it might be a nice place to look out on, because it is, it is a long.
That is the old section, and I'm not sure how many plots they have there that are actually available even. So I'm not sure they're going to be doing any active work right there, but it's a nice place. It's a little creepy, but it's a nice place. That's my comment.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Hernandez? I just have one quick comment. I am, I'm glad that you're bringing this to our community. I thank you very much. We can always use new and modern facilities such as this for our elderly, and I hope you do well with it when you bring it to our community, once hopefully we approve this here. So, we need a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve plan development permit, PD 20170005.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Folks, get to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to other business. Says so right here. And seven, oral reports from planning commissioners and staff. Why don't we start off with staff?
Chairman Dickerson, members of the planning commission, there is no study session tomorrow, and the next planning commission meeting will be on July 19th. Of notable items, the public art master plan will be back, will be scheduled again on that date, and so that will come before you. And there are some other items, but I do not have my draft agenda with me. So this concludes staff's report.
Can I ask a quick question about the art? Will we be presented with more than one funding mechanism?
The latest information I received from Parks and Rec staff includes one recommendation.
Will we be adding anything to the thing, or are we just using, utilizing their?
The information will be provided for your consideration.
Any other, Mr. Senko?
Perhaps Director Ing put this out of his mind, but the shopping car ordinance will be coming for, coming to you at the next planning commission meeting as well.
I trust we will see a large contingent of law enforcement?
Moderate.
Moderate. I see, okay. It's large for our study session.
Well, okay, there was a lot of enthusiasm from law enforcement for that project, for that ordinance.
Okay. Anything from commissioners? Nothing they'd like to discuss? And with that, I close this meeting. Thank you very much.